Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the special meeting, Morro Bay City Council. We will be working on our budget agenda, and I will ask the city clerk to establish a quorum.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Councilmember Barton.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Here.
Mayor Protem Landrum.
Here.
And Mayor Wixson.
Here. Thank you so much. We are going to do all of our other items with our regular meeting at 5:30. So with that, I will open public comment on the budget. Anyone for public comment?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and council. My name is Bill LaFaye, resident of Morro Bay. I did have a chance to go to the Finance Committee meeting last week, so I did get a chance to look at the budgets. And a couple of things that I feel, just as a thought process, I think both our TOT and our sales tax are projected a little too low. And our surplus is too high. And if we actually adjust those three numbers, we'll free up additional funds for other types of purposes for our city. And the one thing that I just don't quite understand, and Carla did mention to me a little bit ago, we're trying to fund 15 capital projects. Our Greg, our Public Works Director, in a meeting about a month ago said, realistically, we only can do about four to five capital projects a year. So from what I understand in the accounting process, we're taking this money, we're allocating it, putting it into a fund, and we might or might not use it. A good example is the Coleman Beach project. We allocated the money, it's in a fund, and now that we want to try to do something, we don't have enough money. And it just bothers me that we're, why don't we just do four to five good capital projects, put money into things that we can do? And especially the paving. I think the paving is too low right now. It's 252,000, I think it is. Let's take some of this surplus money that we have, and let's just do some things that we know we can do.
Good afternoon, Terry Simon, Morro Bay. Unlike Bill, I didn't get a chance to go to the subcommittee meeting, but I did get a chance to start into the overall financial report that was in the agenda. Government financing is quite different than private sector, which is where I've spent most of my life. But the one thing that they have in common is, is that at the end of the day, there's only so much money, and it'll only go so far. And when, unlike the federal government, unless you guys want to get a printing press in here, we have to come up with a way to make the budget balance. I'm a little concerned because, not unlike many bureaucratic organizations, the emphasis always seems to be on, well, we've got to keep raising our rates, and we've got to keep raising our staff compensation. But nobody really ever talks about cutting anything. And I think that there comes a time in all operations when it becomes time to look hard at what we're really spending money on, and do we really need to spend that money? I don't have any suggestions because I haven't been into the budget to the depth that I would like to go. But I am concerned because when I see comments in the staff report that basically say, well, you know, we have to have enough money to be able to pay our staff so that we can do projects, but the way the staff costs are increasing, we're going to have less and less money to do projects. Well, that to me seems fundamentally an error. If we have projects that need to be done, we need to find the money to do them. And if we don't have the money to do them, then we certainly don't need the staff to do projects we don't have money for. So I think that there needs to be a little more balance in the overall budget in the way in which monies are found or not, and monies are spent or not. Thank you.
Good afternoon, all. Barry Brannon, citizen of Morro Bay. I'd like to talk the capital project on the Wharf, the water reclamation facility. When that project was funded, and it's noted on everyone's monthly water and sewer bill, there's a little surcharge down there. And it was remarked that after a certain period of time, that surcharge would probably go away. And I look at the tremendous amount of money that's now in the box saying WRF. And I'd like to understand, with all that money there, I don't see the recharge, the repayment or whatever on the surcharge. As we all talk about, the cost of living is going up, inflation is going up. All the citizens in the city of Morro Bay are feeling that. And I think that maybe it might be a time to address, if we're not going to do that, let's change our water and sewer bill and say, this is not a surcharge, this is the real deal. Let's face the facts. Previous councils committed to this because of the economics that they were faced with. They said, hey, if we get this low interest rate, we're going to get it done cheap, and we're going to be able to get all this money back to the citizens. And I don't see that, and I think it's very disappointing. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? AGP?
Mayor, we have no raised hands online.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment and bring it back to council. I would just thank you all for your comments, and I am hopeful that those will be answered during this process today. Thank you. With that, I will turn it over to our city manager.
Mayor, thank you. I'm going to turn it over to the amazing ladies in the finance department, who actually did a heavy lift for this budget.
Okay, that's us. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the fiscal year 2024-25 Budget Study Session. We look forward to presenting this budget to you. And I want to give a disclaimer, though, right off the top. With just a team of two or 2.5 people, we could not, although everything was prepared thoughtfully and carefully, it was quick. And with too few folks to look at every single detail and get everything completed on time, we are aware that there are a few parts we couldn't get to for this proposed budget. For example, the water discount fund calculations, I did not have time to complete those. It's $60,000 or so, so not a huge impact to what you're seeing today. That will come back to you in the final budget. And the new GAN limit calculations have not yet been completed. Those will also come back to you in the final budget. We may also revisit some of the language in the narrative sections in the beginning of the budget that discuss our community. And of course, we don't think this is ideal, but we did the best that we could with everything we had at the time and look forward to smoother experience in future years. So I just want to take one moment to acknowledge the hard work of Sarah Pruitt, who jumped in whenever she was asked to help. And also Melissa Green, who took on much of this work and coordination and was instrumental in getting this proposed budget into your hands and into the community's hands. And with that, let's jump in. So starting with the agenda, we'll start with a high-level overview, providing a budget in brief summary, a look ahead at the near-term fiscal outlook, a look back, a few trends and takeaways. We'll then go into citywide revenue and expenditures. That's encompassing all of the city's funds. Then we'll look at a few of the personnel changes that are proposed. And then into the five major funds in revenue and expenditure detail. That will include Measure E and CFAC's recommendation to you. And lastly, we'll look at capital projects in overview and the new funding requested this year. And end with a fiscal outlook and action items for you. It's an ambitious agenda. We'll see how much we can get through. So starting with our budget in brief, the total citywide budget is $59.6 million. That's net of transfers. That boils down to $41.6 million in operating and $18 million in capital funding. And I wanted to note that the citywide minimum reserves are $16.5 million. On the left-hand side, you'll see the operating budget summary, that $59.6 million broken down by these funds. We got the five major funds on top. General Fund, Measure E, Harbor Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund. And then other are our special revenue funds. The chart, if you can see, breaks out the budget by percent. Pardon me. With Public Works having the greatest allocation at about 32%. Capital Projects, about the same, 32%. And Police Department, about 10%. Fire Department, 7%. Harbor Department, 4%. Administrative Services Department, 4%. Community Development at 3.5%. Recreation, about 3%. The city manager's office, 2.5%. City Attorney's, almost 1%. The Economic Development Fund has a partial position there, so we noted that, almost half a percent. And then the city council's budget, about 1/3 of 1%. So getting into our near-term fiscal outlook. Major revenues are projected to flatten after having a spike coming out of the pandemic. Property taxes are up approximately 3% based on county projections. We have put sales and use tax down approximately 4%. TOT is up over prior year about 2%. And current services, this is of course citywide, are down approximately 3%. We will get into more detail on these projections as we go deeper into the presentation. Personnel costs are projected to increase about 6% with UAL, or the unfunded accrued liability, costs increasing approximately 10%. I do want to note that union contract negotiations are still in process, and I anticipate seeing an increase in the personnel costs when we bring it back to you for final. Based on this budget, all funds are expected to meet the reserve policies for this coming fiscal year. And the minimum city reserves equate to approximately 40% of operating. I just want to take a brief look back at the citywide budget to actuals. Again, all city funds. In 2021 through 2023, we saw increases to the sewer operating fund and water fund for largely due to the water reclamation facility loan proceeds. We had not budgeted for that revenue, and so it looks like we got more revenue than anticipated. In 2024, the expenses are in excess of revenue due to planned and approved capital spending for the adopted budget. And 2025 assumes that capital spending will be on track with the budget. There's some spending from fund balance. In other words, from transfers into the capital projects fund that were approved and completed in prior years. So taking a closer look at the proposed citywide revenues, again, all funds. Over wide, the citywide revenues are projected to decrease by 8.5%. But net of transfers is an increase of 5%. The decreased transfers are due to the ending of the ARPA funding. In prior years, we had large transfers into the general fund from ARPA. And also, we don't have a need to transfer into our general fund emergency reserve because we have met that minimum and are close to the target. Major revenue sources are mostly flat. And as a change from prior year budgeting, we are not budgeting upfront the mutual aid revenues, but rather, we're going to do a budget adjustment as those revenues are received. The risk of budgeting them upfront is that it appears we have more money than we've received yet, and that could be spent before we get our actuals. I wanted to note here that sales and use tax revenue projections are received from the tax specialists. And then staff conducts an analysis of that projection by looking at current year receipts compared to projected levels. And we conclude a projection of our own. The budgeted amount is 95.5% of the 24-25 projections from the tax specialists. It should be noted here that the 23-24 budget, since the 23-24 budget development, projections have been revised downward. So the 24-25 projections are actually 2.5% higher than the revised 23-24 projections, but about 3% lower than the 23-24 budget. The transient occupancy tax projections are made in-house based on history and considerations of the known future, such as new hotels and anticipated tourism levels. Current services projections are prepared by each department, which finance reviews at a high level to ensure projections are logical. The estimated revenue for the 24-25 TOT is consistent with our tourism partner, Visit Morro Bay. And I also wanted to note that the revenues from current services here, remember, are citywide, so that includes all funds, all enterprise funds such as water, sewer, and the harbor lease revenues. And later in the presentation, we'll look at revenues by fund, and you'll get a better sense of the source at that time. So here, we wanted to present you a visual of the types of revenue and the proportions. So revenues from current services are our major revenue source, about 43%. We can provide this presentation later for closer review. I believe that visual is also in our budget book. The fiscal year 24-25 proposed citywide expenses are, again, all funds. Overall, citywide expenditures are projected to decrease by 27%. But if you pull out transfers, it's a flat change from the 23-24 adopted budget. We have a decrease in the interfund transfers due to decreased new funding requests for capital projects. Again, that ARPA, we're not making the transfer out for ARPA. Personnel costs, again, are about 6% net of the one-time expenses, such as the payment to our Section 115 trust for the UAL. And we will highlight this again later, but the debt service for the Wharf project is starting in this coming fiscal year. So you see that jump from $35,000 to $3.5 million. The $35,000 is for the solar panels and other energy loan from prior years. I also wanted to note here that as staff begin the budget development process, the city manager tasked us all with justifying every request for contract services, consultant services, legal services, and professional development. Those justifications were also required to tie to a specific council goal. And staff, overall, were very diligent in living up to that request and put a lot of time and thoughtful budgeting, which we all greatly appreciated. Here's another graphic to show you the citywide expenditures excluding transfers to show the majority of our expenses are in the services, budgeted approximately 40%. Personnel is about 35%. Capital outlay, about 9%. And down from there. I'm going to toss to my partner here, and she will go into staffing levels.
Good afternoon. So here, we're looking at a citywide summary of full-time staffing levels over the years. For 2025, the city is looking to add three full-time positions, two of which were formerly part-time staff. And the new full-time request for the city manager's office is for a proposed assistant to the city manager, whose primary responsibilities will include community outreach and economic development. This position is proposed to be funded out of both the general fund and the economic development fund, proportionate with that position's assigned duties. In recreation services, two long-time, part-time rec positions are proposed to convert to full-time staff with additional administrative duties, reducing recreation's part-time staffing totals. This change recognizes recreation's consistent revenue generation in excess of budget, which is a great example of the direct connection between personnel and the level of service that the city provides. This is just a quick graphic to illustrate the breakdown of the Assistant to City Manager proposed funding, and then a visual of that revenue generation from recreation services over the years. So those green bars indicate revenue in excess of budget. And you can see that previous staff had chosen to budget conservatively. And this year, we are budgeting more with what we think is a realistic target. Some smaller adjustments were made in part-time staffing, including a new intern for utilities, which will be split between water and sewer, plus seasonal workers for hydrant maintenance. The police department has requested an increase in part-time hours for the homeless outreach case manager and extra help staffing. Harbor is proposing a temporary increase in part-time staffing to assist with the transition to a new software platform for managing harbor leases. Fire is decreasing the number of hours budgeted for seasonal firefighters. And then the part-time utility billing office assistant is now being presented under Public Works instead of Administrative Services. And that's just to align with how the position is funded. The actual supervision is provided by Administrative Services staff. And then overall, the net change from the prior year is a slight decrease in part-time staffing.
So let's take a closer look at the general fund, the first of our five major funds. So the proposed revenues for the general fund are projected to decrease overall by 3.8%, partially due to an end of the ARPA funding. Other revenue sources are largely flat. And as I discussed earlier, we are going to account for the mutual aid revenue in real time rather than budgeting for it upfront. Other revenue includes a lower estimated developer reimbursement revenue, and we will recognize that, again, in real time if additional deposits are received. I'm trying to see if I had any other highlights for you here. This would also, if we receive any additional grants, either state or federal or local, we will recognize that revenue once the funds are received. So that accounts for some of that decrease in intergovernmental revenues. We wanted to show you the general fund revenues by source, property taxes being the largest contributor, followed by transient occupancy tax, sales and use tax, and revenues from current services. I just want to pause for a second and say, I have been hearing the feedback that it's thought revenue projections are too low. We are well aware that we tend to budget on the conservative side because we don't want to over-budget revenue, get less than we think we're going to get, and then overspend. And if we were to increase our anticipated TOT revenues or sales tax revenues, that really equates to not a huge dollar amount increase. So we can look at that. We're happy to take any direction this council wants to give. But if we raise TOT another 2.5% or 2%, we're talking about less than $100,000. So it's not that big of an impact. However, we are open to the direction by council. So we wanted to take you through a sales and use tax history that Measure E was passed in 2020. And we've been rebounding from COVID in '22 and '23 to the tune of approximately six years' worth of growth within two years. And so a leveling off is anticipated because those revenues, people aren't continuing to spend in the same way. And so as spending continues or returns to kind of a normal level, we expect a decrease, which is why you're seeing the projections that we have here. We do anticipate an increase in the out years. The 24-25 proposed expenditures for the general fund, overall, we see a decrease of 16%. But again, net of transfers, that's flat from prior year. Do, again, to the decreases in capital project new funding requests, the ending of ARPA, and no need to contribute to the general fund emergency reserve. Personnel costs, as presented here, include contributions to our Section 115 trust for the UAL. Based on recommendations from the consultant on that funding, we're going to contribute again, but instead of over $1 million, we're budgeting to contribute only $400,000. That just helps smooth out the debt in future years. I wanted to note for you here that the capital outlay has a 2,000% jump. That's $80,000. It's not that much money. But that's for a new boom truck, excuse me, that's a towable boom lift. A new boom truck is estimated to cost about $200,000 or more. So a towable boom is a cheaper alternative that will allow the maintenance division to safely install banners on street lights, make repairs on city facilities, and maintain the city trees. Again, the graphic for you showing the general fund expenditures by department. Our safety, police department is our largest budget, about 26%. Followed by Public Works, almost 20%, 19%. And Fire, almost 18%. Community Development is almost 10%. And the remaining departments are below 10% each.
Now I'm going to take you through the Measure E fund budget. And the proposed revenue budget, as already discussed, is utilizing 95% of HDL's projections and is consistent with recent revenue trends. The city has seen that slowing of sales tax revenue growth in recent years, including this current fiscal year, which is projected to under-realize budgeted revenues by approximately 4%. Which means that the revenue is not so much a decrease over prior year, but consistent. And then here is a graphic to illustrate that sort of flattening out of Measure E revenue over time. There's a major spike in between '21 to '22, and then a plateauing that we continue into the current fiscal year. On the expenditures side, the Measure E budget is about 35% lower than the prior year. And this is largely a reduction in capital project funding, which we were able to do in past years thanks to a healthy fund balance and CFAC's desire to spend down that fund balance, which staff has done. We're now budgeting expenditures lower than projected revenues, which will allow for the maintenance of a small fund balance that would be available to fund mid-year requests or can be reserved for future capital project funding. The baseline budget, which would exclude those capital costs, is not really changing much from prior years. Personnel costs account for about 70% of Measure E budgeted expenditures. And those are projected to increase due to ongoing union negotiations. The percent change in supplies and capital outlay spending is pretty small in terms of the dollars budgeted. Last year, there was a vehicle purchase budgeted out of Measure E. While this year, we're choosing to budget all general government vehicle purchases in the vehicle replacement fund, which explains the decrease in capital outlay spending here. And then some expenditures are being coded to different accounts this coming year, which is why the services budget appears lower. It's actually that those charges are now being presented as other expenses. So the spending is staying the same, and how we're classifying them in accounting terms is changing. And this chart simply shows the allocation of Measure E expenditure budget by department. Again, we're pretty consistent from the prior year. We're at about 30% Public Works, 25% Fire, 25% Police, 12% for CIPs, 9% Harbor. And then the major reduction there is in non-departmental spending, which is transfers for capital projects. Staff is going to be looking for direction from council regarding the CFAC recommendations for the Measure E fund budget. The requests are as follows. The committee recommended removing the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program funding from Measure E, which would result in a $77,000 decrease in expenditures. They recommended removing the local roadway safety plan implementation and sidewalk improvements and street tree replacements projects, the impact of that being a decrease of $350,000 combined. And then they recommended increasing funding for the pavement management project, which would reallocate the $350,000 from those former, those other two projects, and put it towards pavement management. There are no objections to removing the local roadway safety plan funding for FY '25, but the Public Works staff did want to keep this funding in the five-year plan because it could potentially bolster future grant applications. Similarly, staff does not object to removing the sidewalk improvements project, although it's likely that it would be rolled into the annual pavement management program instead. The impact of the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program request is less clear. The proposed Harbor Operating Fund budget for 2025- The proposed Harbor Operating Fund budget for 2025 is projected to have expenditures in excess of revenues, although revenues have exceeded budget for several years, partly due to the timing of percent rent revenues. But the overall impact of CFAC's recommendations would be a reduction of expenditure budget of $77,000. Now I'm going to take you into the weeds a bit. These slides are kind of hard to follow, so I'm going to try to talk you through it as much as I can. We're going to be looking at the five-year fiscal forecast for the major funds. And in the interest of time, we're presenting the combined General Fund and Measure E forecasts. So you'll notice that we're projecting rather flat revenues for both funds from prior to current year. For the General Fund, the FY25 proposed budget is projected to see an overall decrease in revenues, partly due to moderating sales and use tax revenues, but also due to the reduction of one-time ARPA funding, which is about a $600,000 decrease compared to last year. Then Measure E is seeing a slight decrease in projected revenue compared to '24 estimates, as we've already discussed. On the expense side, we're projecting lower-than-budgeted expenditures for FY24 due to salary savings from vacancies in key positions. And then those vacancies are also translating to lower spending, as some work has been delayed due to the transitions in staff or interim appointments. For FY25, we're budgeting, assuming full staffing and full workloads. The bottom line is that you can see a trend of decreasing beginning fund balance year over year, as well as a closing gap between projected revenues and projected expenditures. Throughout the forecast period, you'll notice a combined operating surplus, but in the out-years of the forecast, the General Fund's expenditures overtake revenues, resulting in an operating deficit. Now we'll look at the impact of adding one-time capital and other one-time transfers into the mix. So this results in a deficit in all but the proposed FY25 budget year. And these negative numbers reflect the projected use of fund balance in both Measure E and the General Fund to pay for these one-time expenditures. And the practice of using fund balance for one-time expenditures is not necessarily a bad thing, but it has to be done above reserve thresholds, which appears to become a challenge for the city in these out-years. This slide shows the ending fund balances after all revenues, expenditures, and one-time transfers are accounted for. And highlighted in the red box are two negative values for FY2028 and FY2029. That would be the starting fund balance for the General Fund. To spend at the levels projected in this forecast, a transfer from emergency reserves would be required to avoid those negative balances, resulting in a reserve ratio lower than advisable by FY2029. And staff will be looking at our reserve policies this year to ensure that the policies align with the city's risk tolerance levels. But a reserve balance of only 16% of projected operating expenditures would fall below any best practices and would not be recommended. So the major takeaway here is that we're continuing to face challenges when it comes to funding capital projects from cash. When viewed as combined funds, the General Fund and Measure E are unable to support both operating and capital expenditures beginning next fiscal year. This means that the city would rely on cash reserves to fund capital projects, which can only occur for so long before bumping against reserve ceilings established by council.
This is a lot of data. Just want to check in. Want to keep plowing forward? Yes, okay. So we'll go into the next major fund, the Harbor Fund, which we're showing fiscal year '25 proposed budget and projections based on the forecast for '26, '27, '28, and '29. The blue line on the left is the expenditures, including operating transfers and capital, and the red line is the projected revenues. So this budget's looking, this fund is looking pretty good as the years go out with revenues and expenditures being pretty well in line until we get out to '28 and '29 where the expenditures exceed the anticipated revenues. And it's a conservative forecast using the assumption that Harbor revenues will increase by about 2.5% to 3% per year, and that most expenditures will increase by 4% to 5% per year. And it's possible that the revenues will outperform that projection, or expenditures, expenditure growth might moderate in the out-years if inflation tapers off. But the fund's primary challenge is how to address significant deferred capital needs. And the out-years of the forecast project declining reserves, which mean the declining capital funding resources. The Harbor Operating Funds, looking at about 4% revenue growth and about a 10% expenditure growth excluding transfers. The inter-fund transfer decrease here is largely due to the decrease requests for new funding for capital projects. I wanted to point out that those green lines in the revenue, those bars are mostly the percent rent lease revenue received after the close of the fiscal year. Moving into the Water Fund. This chart shows the year-to-year balances for the Water Operating Fund, including the capital and pension costs. Available fund balance sustains the fund in the first two forecasted years, but is exhausted by fiscal year '27 and is insufficient to cover large planned capital needs in that year. The current revenue structure does not fully support the fund's ongoing capital needs, so this forecast has the potential to worsen, especially if capital needs increase. I also wanted to note that the budgeted debt service is based on the current amortization schedules or loan repayment schedules we have. But we are continuing to draw down on those loans, spend money and draw down reimbursements that we will have to repay, so that debt service is going to grow over time. And we will take a closer look at debt in a few minutes. So the Water Operating Fund budget has 0% revenue growth projected and 27% of expenditure growth excluding transfers. We're looking into the jump in the personnel services, but in the discussion just before the meeting, I think we determined that's due to a few part-time positions that have been requested. And the debt service you see there is this Water Fund's portion of the repayment of the WFIAs loans for the water reclamation facility. The last major fund to talk to you about today is the Sewer Fund. So this chart shows the year-to-year balances for the Sewer Operating Fund. The fund shows a large deficit in the first few years due to high capital spending, followed by rising and falling fund balance as capital costs fluctuate over time. This chart does include both pension and capital expenditures. The Sewer Operating Fund's budget has, again, 0% revenue growth and 60% expenditure growth excluding the transfers. The large jump you see there is the $2.5 million for both WFIAs and SRF WRF loan repayments, same as the Water Fund. This is based on the current amortization or repayment schedules that we have on hand. We are still continuing to spend and pull down from those loans. Thus, this repayment amount will increase over time until we have drawn down the full amount of loans. So on the note of the loans, this, I could do an entire presentation on our loans and the loan structures, but just for the purposes of today, in a quick snapshot, the annual payments as they exist today for the Water Fund are $936,053 for the WFIAs loan. Out of the Sewer Fund is $645,000 for the WFIAs loan and $1.9 million for the SRF loan, for a total of just shy of $3.5 million a year. The WFIAs stands for Water Infrastructure Finance and Innovation Act. That's through the EPA, our Environmental Protection Agency. It's still noteworthy to show that's just a 0.83% interest rate. The SRF loan is from the State Revolving Fund through California State Water Resources Control Board, and also very low interest at 0.9%. I can go into more detail, but only if you have questions when we get to that point. I can answer any questions you might have on that.
And now we'll transition it into capital projects. So the total new funding requested for capital projects is approximately $18 million from all funds. Most of the CIP budget being proposed here is for sewer and water projects, which is why the major funding sources are those two operating funds. Grants are the next largest funding category for our projects, with additional funding coming from the General Fund, Measure E Transit Operating, and RMRA funding, which is for These next slides are going to list out the projects categorized by their major funding source. And if the project is ongoing, I've endeavored to include the estimated carry-forward budget from prior years. But I wanted to caution that these are finance estimates only, so public works staff can chime in if I've grossly under or overestimated any funding for these projects. And we are working on a collaboration to try to better track project budgets year over year. For the General Fund, the only major project being funded this year is the annual storm drain replacement and major maintenance project, which is receiving $500,000 plus the estimated $116,000 projected carry-forward budget. Measure E has three proposed projects. The local roadway safety plan implementation project for $100,000, sidewalk improvements and street tree replacements at $250,000, and then a new project, the Morro Bay Bridge Inspection and Assessment Project at $80,000. From the General Fund Capital Accumulation Fund, we are proposing $144,000 for the Veterans Hall Building Improvements Project, and that will be combined with the $335,000 estimated project carry-forward budget. The Road Maintenance and Rehab Fund, RMRA, is proposing $269,000 in annual pavement management program funding, plus the projected $3 million carry-forward budget. And then from the Transit Operating Fund, we are proposing a Morro Bay Transit Vehicle Replacement Project at $160,000. And only a small portion of that project is being funded from the Transit Operating Fund. The actual major source is grant funding. From the Water Operating Fund, we are proposing the Morro Basin Well Field Rehabilitation Project, which is receiving $1.25 million plus an estimated $500,000 carry-forward, and the Nutmeg Tank and Related Pressure Zone Improvements Project at $1.8 million in new funding plus $1.3 million in carry-forward budget. The Water Operating Fund and Sewer Operating Fund combined are funding the water reclamation facility project. There's $3.8 million being requested, which I believe brings that project up to its full estimated project cost. There's about $9 million of projected carry-forward budget for that project. From the Sewer Operating Fund, we have the Beach Comer Drive Area Backyard Sewer Improvements Project for $100,000 plus $100,000 of carry-forward budget. Main Street and Atascadero Sewer Main Replacements Project, which is requesting $4.5, $4.6 million plus $4.2 million carry-forward budget. Utility Hole Rehabilitation Project is asking for $150,000 plus $225,000 carry-forward. And then the wastewater treatment plant decommissioning project is requesting $4.8 million plus $262,000 of carry-forward budget. Lastly, we have the Storm Recovery Dock Repairs Project, which will be coming out of the Harbor Operating Fund. This project is not actually receiving new budget allocation. We're requesting to reallocate funding from a previously funded capital project. That funding source is the Beach Street Slips Project, which is not recommended to be pursued at this time. And the Harbor Department believes that transferring funds to this project would provide a greater return on investment. This fun slide is trying to illustrate the difference in two different funding scenarios. So the top slide is a portion of the five-year fiscal forecast for the combined General Fund and Measure E, and it's what we've built into the budget. So in this forecast, we had the ending fund balance before reserves going negative by FY2028, resulting in a need for a transfer from the emergency reserves, and then a lowering of that reserve ratio. In the bottom example, we are cramming in the full $2.6 million of funding from either the General Fund or Measure E. And the result of that action puts us in a deficit state in FY2027. And by the end of that five-year forecast period, it drops our reserve ratio down to approximately 15% of operating. Now, in reality, that's only slightly worse than the 16% of operating, which is what you end the fiscal forecast in the budgeted scenario on top. So clearly, a reliable funding source for pavement management needs to be identified. But the point in illustrating this is simply that delaying the funding gives us more time to find that reliable source.
Melissa, do we have this slide in our packet? I didn't see this.
No, we were working on these slides about five minutes before.
Because we can't read them here at all.
They will be made available, I believe, after the meeting.
That doesn't do.
You'll just have to focus on the red boxes. It's larger than the bottom one.
So overall, the citywide long-term fiscal outlook is that we're looking at revenue shortfalls in the coming fiscal years as costs continue to escalate and revenues remain relatively flat at this point in time as projected. This department is going to be looking at a risk-based reserve strategy to look at potentially bringing a recommendation to council regarding the current reserve thresholds. And lastly, the capital projects funding for future remain limited absent new revenue streams, and staff capacity to deliver funded projects also remains constrained. And that concludes the major data portion of our presentation to you. Some action items for your consideration are, look at the CFAC recommendations and give us direction. Similar with personnel changes, we would be looking for direction approving or disproving those changes, and any others council priorities you have. And we are here, ready to talk and answer any questions you may have.
Are they getting ready to start their questions? I'm going to ask one, and then I'm going to pass it on. I think I reached out to the Finance Department, and I'm not sure. In that conversation, you talked about what we put out last year for the 2023 floods that was unbudgeted, and what we've received in insurance, and what we expect to receive in FEMA, and any idea when we'll be receiving that funding, what those estimated amounts
We have received a $45,000 payment from FEMA so far, and I think that went into the General Fund. And approximately $400,000, I believe, in And approximately $400,000, I believe, in insurance is pending. Those go into the same funds that paid those costs out, which are a little bit of Water Fund and the rest Sewer Fund. And a small amount to Harbor. Thank you, Dana. As far as other things that are pending, I'll be looking over at Mr. Qualick, I think, maybe.
Thank you, Director Conrad, and thank you, Mayor and City Council. So I would classify, and I don't have exact numbers with me today, but I would classify the FEMA reimbursement process as having three buckets. You know, one bucket is the money that we're pretty reliably gonna get back. And that is, and I'm not gonna go too much into FEMA jargon, but categories A and B. It's essentially work that we've already spent money on during the disaster itself, those few days. And that will get back 75% plus, I think, 18.25% from the state. Then there's a bucket of projects that we would like FEMA to reimburse us for, that they're gonna tell us we are ineligible to receive. And how much money is gonna be in that bucket, I don't know. But again, that's money that we won't get. We are running into an issue with FEMA where, for a lot of our infrastructure, it was in bad shape prior to the disaster. We don't have maintenance records. And we don't have, you know, long-range planning showing, you know, what maintenance has been done, what's planned. And so FEMA sees that as us not maintaining our infrastructure, and therefore not really their problem. Because a good example is Preston Road. Preston Road was in really bad shape. We spent some money fixing it up. And FEMA looked at satellite images of that and old maps and old Google Street View, said, well, you know, it was already in total disrepair, so why should we pay for it? So we don't know, again, how much of our projects will be landing in that category. Staff is fighting the best we can to try to keep that funding option. And then the third bucket is projects that we will be eligible for, but we haven't done yet. And so we're not doing it today, but as the council knows, we'll be bringing a capital projects prioritization staff report to the City Council. Actually, I was speaking with Finance today. It might be a good idea to collaborate on that, because I think the council's gonna expect to see some budget numbers with those capital projects as you make decisions about what to remove and what to keep. But there's gonna be dozens of projects that the city will have the option to perform. And then that we would be eligible for reimbursement. But there's gonna be deadlines for that that are pretty aggressive. And, you know, as we do those projects, that means we won't be putting resources on other capital projects. So certainly some decisions to be made now. We do have new staff working on the FEMA process in Public Works. And so, you know, partially that they are still getting up to speed on that, but they are moving the process forward. And we hope to be able to bring you some picture of that with the capital projects prioritization.
Thank you. So a whole lot of no answer on it. Funding-wise, specifically funding-wise. Just trying to balance out what we've paid out and what we hope to receive back, I think.
Yes, and I would say that for that category A, B that I mentioned, where we do expect to get the funding back, we could be looking at a few hundred thousand dollars.
That's it.
Like three to 500,000 would be a success, I think, for those projects.
On top of the 445 from the insurance and the... Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Please.
Can I just follow up on that while you're talking about it? So I still am not clear on what that represents as far as what we've put out for those projects. Yeah, like what percentage of what we've put out are we looking to get back for, you know, for the, those projects?
It's a good question. Thank you, Councilmember Landrum. So the category A and B projects are the, is the work that we did that week, that, you know, that couple of weeks after where we had bins out, we had heavy equipment out there, moving dirt around. You know, that we can expect to receive 75% from the feds and 18.25% from the state. So I believe that leaves the city on the hook for 6.75%. Thank you, Cindy. I got the head nod. The other projects, I mean, most of them we haven't done yet. So we actually haven't performed the work. Some of them are gonna be ineligible, some are gonna be eligible. And for those that are eligible, again, we'd receive the 75% from the feds, and then from the state, another 18.25%.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think that's, I was just trying to understand what we'd actually physically paid out that was unbudgeted due to the floods and what we hope to receive back. So similar outside of the projects we would take on, we will be reimbursed some of the money from our funding. So just trying to get an idea on that. Thank you. Councilmember Edwards, you ready to start? I know you're the CFAC rep, so you got two swipes at this now.
Thank you, Mayor. Probably I'm gonna stick with Mr. Qualick here. One of the things that was brought up at the CFAC meeting with regard to, I think, CIP funding was when you have, it was a suggestion about a three-year cycle where any money that's not used toward a project maybe gets re, like, put back into the font or something of that nature. So in other words, if we don't see, we discover that, you know, we've put a certain amount of money forward into the pot for a project, we put very little into design or move forward on it, then we put it back. That was something that was mentioned. Kind of wanna get your take on that. The other part of this was the idea that when you allocated some money for a specific project, say like $1 million for this project, and the idea was that you utilize some of that money to have temporary staffing for that project so that it wouldn't take away from resource, meaning people to execute, like pavement management, so that we weren't, you know, staff wasn't being pulled one direction from the other. Do you recall that?
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. I do, and I'll try to answer those questions the best I can. So I understand the three-year cycle idea, and there's certainly a temptation there. I've got a lot to say about that, so stop me if I'm talking too much. But, you know, that could make sense for certain types of projects. If there's a project that is like a wait-and-see, if we really need to do it or not, we budget the funds, and then we, you know, three years go by, ah, maybe we didn't need to do that. Then maybe that three-year cycle would be helpful with that. There's other projects that we have, and I would say we don't probably have a lot of those projects. I can't think of one. But the other types of projects we have are like ongoing maintenance. So, you know, road paving would be a good example. We had a consultant a couple of years ago analyze our streets and the pavement condition. This was prior to the January 2023 storms. And we had a pretty low pavement condition index. And to just keep our pavement at its, at a level condition, we would need to spend 2.8 million per year just on pavement. And so if you, if you kind of zoom out and go to that three-year look, just to keep pavement at our current condition, and I'm gonna, I've choked myself here, because I need to do the math on my head, but 5.6, 7, so we'd be at like 7.4 million over three years. Now, if staff is overburdened and doesn't do a paving project in one year, what we'd like to be able to do is carry forward the money and then use that the next year in addition to the newly allocated money so that we're still keeping up with that 2.8 million dollar average. If you look at like a three-year cycle model, the theory might go, well, the money hasn't been spent, let's take it back. Well, then we've done nothing, and it's like we're sort of planning on doing nothing. So I don't think that would be advisable from the standpoint of, you know, knowing that we have a lot of capital work and investment that needs to happen in the city. You know, another area that I don't think is well-understood, if I may, is that our operating budgets are run on a one-year cycle. And, you know, some cities actually do a two-year cycle. But here we do a one-year cycle. And if you don't spend the money, if you don't spend the money in your operating budget, it goes away at the end of the fiscal year, and that's just how it is. And that's very appropriate for personnel costs and other costs that we have for operations. Capital monies are typically more like investments. They're long-term. They're not short-term. And sometimes they take time to realize. You know, if we have a complex sewer project, like Beach Comer and the Beach Comer backyard situation, which I know some of the council is aware of, you know, that may not be figured out in a couple of years. Or, and so, you know, with that, if staff doesn't know how much money is going to be budgeted for construction, we probably just wouldn't even work on it, because we don't know what to expect. We don't know how much money is gonna be allocated or not. When we have the allocation, at least we know what our parameters are. My concern is, and it's similar to something Ms. Conrad said earlier, if we just don't allocate the money, then it's gonna be spent on other things. And then when we need the money for the infrastructure, it may not be there. And so in many ways, in my view, even though it may be counterintuitive, it's prudent to sort of put in the bank the money that we think we're gonna need for certain projects. Now, what that's created, and I'm going into more of a capital projects prioritization question, which will be a separate report to the City Council. What it's created over the years is what we're thinking now is a horizontal problem. We have all these different projects. It's become a bit unmanageable. We have like over 45 capital projects right now. What we don't have is a vertical problem, and this came up at the CFAC meeting, like with road paving. We have around $3 million, the Finance Department mentioned, for road paving. Well, if we allocate another, let's say, 3 million, now we have 6 million. If we're gonna do that project in, let's say, October, whether it's a $3 million project or a $6 million project, it's not that big of a difference from a staffing resources standpoint. Yes, we'll have to do a little bit more work on the design. Yes, there'll be a little bit more work overseeing the construction of that. But the preparation up to it is largely the same. So we can make these projects vertical. We can make bigger investments in targeted areas and still get them done. Our problem comes when we start adding projects and adding projects, which is why we only have one new project this year. Even though we have new funding allocations, most of that's for existing projects. We only have the Bridges project this year, and that's because the state notified us of an issue that we have to respond to. But that horizontal problem is, has been our challenge. And that's where we might wanna look, you know, at some point in taking away some of the projects that we have. And so I'll just stop there and see if I answered your question.
A bit, yeah. I think I would still go back to the idea of, within the amount that you're allocated, what about doing some temporary staff hiring for that specific project? Because I think there is a concern, based on the resource, the use of that word, that you get pulled away when there's an emergency, for example, or you get pulled away to, you know, a storm drain, or whatever it may be. And that the paving management, let's just focus on paving management, that somehow that's gonna, you know, take a backseat when I think that is one of the capital items that clearly this community feels strongly about.
Thank you for the question. I don't know how temporary staffing would work. I mean, would that, I think that's really a question for operations that we could kick around internally and think about how best to enhance our capacity. You know, I mean, the issue with temporary staffing is that really becomes hiring consultants, which can be, they tend to be expensive. And, you know, we already use consultants for design. Then we'd be looking at using consultants to also manage the other consultants, and then we're just spending a lot of money. And we do that with some projects. I mean, the Wharf is an example of that. But, you know, we're paying millions of dollars to our consultants to manage other consultants.
I think I'm speaking more, sorry, Mr. Qualick. I think I'm speaking more to an engineer, you know, somebody on the engineering side. But I'm just, you know, throwing this around.
With engineers, that's, it's not very likely to find a project manager that would accept the hourly rate that the city pays at a part-time basis.
And then the other thing is, I guess, with regard to the bridge, the Morro Bay Bridge project that you're, that came out with us and that the state is requiring us to, I guess, act on that. Is that what you said? Did I hear that correctly?
Yes, we have to put together a plan of action.
And, because I, I'm wondering, you know, some projects, you know, they come up, but it's not... How do you determine how necessary and how quickly we have to act on something in terms of allocating money to it?
It's a good question, and I'll say, in this case, we don't have a clear answer to that yet. And so our staff is, you know, working with getting meetings with the state to make those determinations. And we thought, you know, just in time for budget in this case, let's just put some money in there, because in case this is a shorter-term thing. But, I mean, so typically, we'd be working with the regulatory agency to determine that.
Thank you, Mr. Qualick. I think this question would be for Ms. Conrad. So it came up that other cities do have a two-year cycle. Is there a reason? I'm just trying to understand, and I guess for the community's sake, why we have a one-year as opposed to a two-year? And what would be the differences of doing that?
I don't know that there's a reason other than past practice. Prior staff has considered doing two-year budgets. The prior Admin Services Director was really leaning towards doing that. Some, one school of thought is, then you only have to do it once every two years. But in actuality, you have to revise it for that second year, based on the actuals of the first year. So the other school of thought then is, you end up doing a two-year budget two times. You're doing the work anyway. I have never done a two-year budget, so I can't speak from personal experience. I mean, we could try it.
No, I just, since it was mentioned, and I had heard it before, I just thought I would ask you. Thank you. Did you wanna add something, Senator Manager?
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards and Mayor. I really just wanna reinforce what Finance Director Conrad has said about two-year budget. And two-year budget cycle or one-year budget cycle is really a preference of each agency. In our, I would not recommend two-year budget cycle right now, because we are having a relatively new team. And like she stated, two-year budget cycle does bring some efficiency, and you can plan it out, and you don't have to deal with it every year, because it is a heavy-lifting task to do the budget. But on the other hand, things change, and you have to do the budget amendment in one year. When one year one is finished, you have to do certain things. And there is, there is pros and cons to each option. At this point, this is what we're trying, we, also, I wanna point out that the city have this ClearGov module. And it is my understanding that this is new or just implemented maybe a couple of years ago. And then to do that, it's only, it's a task. You have to have budget spreadsheet. And then you, somehow, you make a budget spreadsheet and then ClearGov to integrate information together. And then that's, I just, I didn't wanna suggest major changes too fast, because that's just additional things that we cannot handle.
No, it makes sense. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, questions?
Thank you, Mayor. The remaining questions that I have, because I have to say, a lot of them were answered in the report given today and from Councilmember Edwards' questions. But I do have a question, and I apologize, Ms. Conrad, because I know you said it and I didn't catch it. When you mentioned the TOT was down, was that county-wide or just city-wide?
I was referring to a city, our city.
City, okay. So our city is down, but we don't know if it's county-wide, like the reasons. County's up, okay. But we're down. Got it. Okay. And then my other question is, one of my other questions is, Mr. Qualick, I did wanna interrupt Councilmember Edwards' Q and A, but I have a question regarding the hiring of staff, maybe part-time staff. And just to kind of piggyback off of a question she asked you earlier, just kind of a theoretical question. If we were to hire another staff member, which we don't really, we don't have the budget for that right now, but if we were to budget for a staff member, I'm curious if it would pay for itself if our capital projects were finished in a more timely manner, if we were to save on deferred maintenance, if we were to save on inflation, those types of things, if we were able to finish these projects quicker. Just, I know, it's a theoretical question. question, but I'm just kind of curious what your take would be on that.
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. I mean, yes, but it probably wouldn't save money as it might show up on an accounting book. So, you know, we would fund a position based on what we have available in our accounting system, and it'd be very difficult and, I think, risk-heavy to assume, to make certain assumptions about cost escalations in the future, and, you know, what, what the value is of deferred maintenance, and then put a number on that, and then hire against it. But, I would say that the finance department and the city manager and I have been in conversations about a couple of options to be able to either figure out another position or add capacity to current staff, because our current staff are burdened with other, our engineers are burdened with other tasks beyond capital projects, and it really takes away from their ability to work on these construction projects. And so, we are potentially looking at operational efficiencies, as well as maybe ways where we could potentially add a staff person if we charge that new person to the projects themselves, rather than to, so, for example, right now, we have a senior civil engineer, and they're charged against a few funds, right? Water, sewer, and Q and E, and I believe a little bit on harbor. You know, another model might be, we put 20 or 30% of that person on general time, you know, Q and E or some of these other funds, and then they are charging, much like a consultant would do, charge against certain project account numbers that they're working on. And with that, we would just be deferring those costs to the project for that person, which means that the project budget would go up, but at least the project would be getting done. And so, you know, that's some things that we want to work out. It's, obviously, during budget season, it's kind of hard to put all that together, but we have discussed that and are going to be looking at that this summer.
I appreciate that. I know that was kind of a strange question. But, you know, I'm thinking, and then this is just some things that I, you know, and I'm looking at this budget, and I see where we're headed, and I know it's impossible to estimate the impacts of climate change and inflation and all of these things that are not always necessarily predictable. And so, I just, you know, those are the types of concerns that plague me and what keeps me up at night, is how do we prepare for the unknown, right? And, and so, just wanted to put that out there. But, another, I have another question. Let's see here, I had a couple here. I apologize. I'm going to check some off, because you guys answered most of them. Sorry. One of the, okay, so I do have a question regarding, I know on service fees, we've had reduced fees historically, and I believe we still do have a reduced fee for our, like our water, for people who qualify for that. And I'm curious if that's still being taken into consideration, if we'll be able to continue offering those types of services to our lower-income community, and just wanting to be mindful of making sure that, in all of these cuts, that we're still making sure that we're taking care of our whole community.
Yes, we anticipate being able to continue funding that discount program for water and sewer ratepayers. It's currently council-approved at 10%.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Conrad.
Pardon me. That's one of the changes that you'll see to the budget when we bring it back for final, because I haven't completed those calculations yet.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you. I'm going to hold any other questions for now. All the other councilmembers, chime in.
Thank you. I'm going to chime in and answer in part one of your questions that you asked, because I have the visit SLOCal numbers that I just recently shared with the city manager and finance director. And SLOCal's tourism industry earnings are showing an increase of 5.9% year-over-year. And tourism in Slow County, the seven cities in the county comprises of 10.66% of the countywide GDP. And they're saying that its tourism industry earnings after tax net income for traveling include wages and salary disbursements is $912 million. So, the county as a whole, including all of us, is seeing growth. So, just that I would share that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Barton, questions?
Greg, I wanted to tee off of Councilmember Ford's question about hiring people to come and run our projects for us. I'm just curious about, have you, have you seen much in the way of, you know, sort of like, what would you be, like a wrangler essentially, you know? Have you seen that, that particular kind of a person showing up for, for our projects, or we just haven't looked yet at all? Because it seems, to me, it seems like a good idea. I just, I'm not sure how many there might be, or how you might find them, or that sort of thing. Because my observation is that there are many, many big contractors doing many, many different things around here, and whether or not there's anybody left over to come over to Morro Bay and help us with our projects is a question.
Thank you for the question. And do you mean specifically for project managers or for something else?
Project managers, is what I was thinking.
Yeah. So, I'll share that I have not seen the part-time employee model. I've seen the consultant model. I'm sure we could find consultants locally to manage projects for us. We would still have to manage them, but we could find that. At a previous city that I worked for, we actually had consultant engineers at our office that were just doing project management. So, I've seen that model too, and you pay, you pay hourly for that, and the hourly rate is high, but, you know, they're there. And if you don't like them, you just swap them out for another one, kind of thing. So, I have seen that model.
Yeah.
And I don't think it would be an issue to bring in consultants, other than that we don't, we don't really have the budget for that.
Yeah. Thank you. No.
No. Councilmember Landrum?
Well, before I forget, I wanted to follow up with something that was in the comments, the public comment earlier, about the surcharge on the sewer bill and that being temporary. And what is the likelihood of that really being temporary?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. And so, we are in the middle of a sewer and water rate study, and that question is coming up. You know, staff's understanding is it's very likely we'll continue that surcharge, of course, up to the discretion of the city council, until the debt service is paid off. I believe the surcharges are bringing in around 2.8 million. Do you have a rough figure on that, Emily?
I would research that and get back to you, but I don't have that at the top of my mind, no.
Yep. I apologize for putting you on the spot there. But, you know, my understanding is that the surcharge does not cover, on an annual basis, the debt service for the project. And so, the idea would be to continue that surcharge until the conclusion of the project. Certainly, the public commenter mentioned maybe just removing the surcharge and making that, like leveling out the rates to meet where the surcharge brings the bill to. And, you know, that, of course, would be an option if the city council wanted to do that.
Okay. And, so, I didn't have a chance to, I asked Director Qualick my questions, but I didn't have a chance to ask anyone else. So, I apologize. But, getting the, this on a, right before a three-day weekend, it was, you know, with all of the other stuff that we have going on, it was, it was a lot. So, forgive me. But, my questions are really basic. I wanted to know how many vacancies we currently have?
Our current count of vacancies is 10 full-time positions.
Okay. And then, let's see. Oh, yeah, for, you're going to analyze the reserve risk, and I'm just curious how much that study is to do, or estimate?
Just our time here.
Oh, you do it yourselves, okay. All right. And, let's see. Oh, where, the projections, where do those come from? You might have already answered that.
Was there a specific projection in mind?
Page 52 and 53, the forecast chart, the fund forecast.
So, the major fund forecasts?
Yeah.
Does that sound right?
Mm-hmm.
There's a variety of sources. So, for general fund, we get our revenue projections from various sources. The property tax comes from county, sales tax comes from our tax consultants, and then we do an analysis in-house on that and come up with a figure. Transit occupancy tax, we complete it in-house as well. And every, she's pointing out here that every fund forecast has a table at the very bottom that shows the forecast assumptions, if that's helpful. The expenditures are calculated based on, to as much detail degree as we can, but most, for the most part, it's just a month-over-month average of what we've spent so far compared to the budget, and come up with what the remaining months might be, based on that ratio. There are a few exceptions to that for large expenses that we know we won't have until the end of the fiscal year, but we try to account for all of those major knowns.
Okay. And who is the tax, the entity that-
It's one, one branch of HDL.
Oh, okay.
It's their tax branch.
Okay. And on page 54, why would the TOT estimates go up and the sales tax go down?
We created those projections based on all the information we have now. So, it's how the revenues are trending at this point in time.
Okay. I mean, it just, that just seems kind of counterintuitive to me, but, and-
Well, not, I would say not everyone is renting a hotel room or renting a house. Some people own their homes and they come here, so they might spend more at our local shops and retail stores, but not necessarily be renting any room. That will result in TOT to the city, just as an example.
Well, I thought the TOT was going up and the, and the sales tax was going down.
She just confirmed what you said is correct.
Oh, yeah. So, do you, do you see what I mean? It's sort of, like, if the TOT was going up, so would the sales tax, right?
Unless they, then, the opposite of what I said, unless they aren't doing any shopping and they're just staying in a hotel and taking in the sights or taking a hike, but not spending money in retail.
Can I interject on that? And then, the sales tax matter, sales tax and typically, they, TOT and the sales tax can go on the same speed. However, we needed to realize that in Morro Bay, we don't really have a big, big sales tax provider. These days, online shopping has been a trend. And if you look at a sales tax report, online shopping has brought in, and the pool, county pool has brought in more of the sales tax. So, tourism, when they come here, maybe they eat at your restaurants and things like that. But, they don't, they don't, if they go up, they don't really generate sales tax. The grocery, there's no sales tax to them. If we have a mall, something like, something like Costco, yes, or a car dealership, then that's, that's a, that's a bigger generator. But, just, our local, local stores, local retails are not a big sales tax generator, unfortunately.
Right. I guess I was just thinking of restaurants and things like that.
Yeah, but restaurant for sure. And then, we do see restaurants, restaurants and sales tax revenue going up, but that's probably the only sector that in retail that is going, going up for here, for Morro Bay. And then, and I would say restaurant is always busy. You have tourism, they're going to be busy. If you don't, it's just locals, people eat restaurant as well. So, unfortunately, it's, the tourism-based things are not, they're not quite correlate, correlate quite, quite well with the sales tax.
Okay. And then, the last one is on page 203. And I was just, it, I wanted to better understand that, because it shows that the city council was over budget in 2023. And I'm, and then, if I look at the expenses, I'm wondering where the, you know, where the increases come from and what the rationale is there. Because I want to be as, as aware and responsible as possible, and if I can help make those expensive expenses less, I want to know about that and why we were over budget.
So, I'm fairly confident that the 23 budget overage was related to bringing on new council members. So, we spent more on professional development that year than we had planned for. That was one of the major increases. That was just the training and, you know, doing all of the different workshops for new council members.
Okay, all right. Then, and then, it shows that personnel services, is, what is it going up? I mean, is that, is that anything that we can control? Is that salary, is that our stipend, or what is, where is that? Is that under, no, it would be under, what is personnel services?
We'll need a minute to dig into that detail.
And then, and then also supplies, is that, do you just, I mean, that's a huge increase. Is that just based on costs going up, or?
So, I am getting that supplies are things like laptops and nameplates that we anticipate having to change out if new council members come on. And then, I'm still researching the personnel. One second.
I can't see the numbers, because they're very tiny from here. But, January 23, I believe, would have been when the stipend increase went into effect as well. So, that's why you're seeing an increase there.
Oh, okay, all right. Thank you.
Melissa and Emily, while you're studying that, I want to tell you how much I admire you're able to pull this stuff up and, you know, make, turn on a dime and cough it out. You know, it's just, it's great. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Technology is great sometimes.
Thank you. Yeah, we're going to circle back around here in a minute. And I, and I just want to chime in again on the sales tax. I appreciate our projections are low and conservative. I'm always a fiscal conservative, being a small business owner in this community for 37 years. TOT, for me, and sales tax, I mean, with inflation, everything's gone up. Our costs have gone up, and so have the prices everywhere have gone up. So, it, the brick-and-mortar businesses do struggle with the online sales. But, we have a lot of unique stores in this community that people come and shop in, as well as our hardware stores and things that really are consistent, I think, throughout the years. And certainly, fuel tax and some of those other things, not that that's sales tax, despite the electric vehicles at $5 a gallon adds to it all too. So, as much as I, I'm always on the side of caution, I feel like those numbers might be understated again. So, you have more questions? Yeah.
No, actually, you just, you caught it. I was going to mention fuel. If we're looking at, to what Proton Landrum said, when we have rooms rented, probably the big one is people coming through and gassing up. So, I would venture to say there would be probably a bigger connection there than anything. I do have a couple of them, and I'll save the one I have for Ms. Conrad and Ms. Green. But, I think this could be a question for our city manager. I know that our current council has been working really hard to enhance our operational efficiency and reduce costs for the city. And just curious if you, you know, Yvonne, if you would like to share, you know, some ways that we've been working on that. And I think many people here that are listening and probably are aware of a lot of the things that we've been doing, but if you could maybe just kind of touch on a few things that we're doing to work on reducing costs and-
Yes. That's a very good question, and I love the question, and I love to give you a thoughtful answer. I'm trying to-
I'm just trying to kill time while there. I'm just trying to kill time while they're doing research.
I have things I could say. I have other things I could add to clarify earlier questions. But as far as the things we do to be more efficient, and, you know, I know we do that every day. We, we have. Yeah, I know we utilize, we will utilize, of course, we utilize technology. We also, and some things that, from technology standpoint, we have some, some, we have a lot, we have software that we, we, we use, like ClearGov is one of the amazing software to, you know, to show, to make a nice presentation for the budget. And then I wanted to ask, I want to look at departments over there and to see, maybe they can give you more tangible example. Well, I'm thinking about it as well. I have also thought about something that I need to articulate. I'm, I'm looking at Harbor, maybe Harbor have some?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I threw that at you, but I was just like, oh. I heard, you know, I've heard from one of our individuals in the audience, you know, like, you know, we need to cut costs and just thought maybe we could all?
Yeah, I, I can get back to that.
Sure.
But I think, I think Ted has something that?
Well, I can add one. Thank you, city manager Kimball. So the one area that this year that we're planning to implement is Yardi software for our real estate, property management. We've been doing everything by hand, Excel spreadsheets, everything's on paper. We plan to implement that in the next coming weeks. We're hiring a part-time person to help us get all of the data onto the system. And at that point, I think we're gonna see a lot of efficiency at the Harbor.
Thank you for that.
We're ready to answer your question.
Oh, great.
Thank you for the grace in giving us a moment to look that up. So anytime you're dealing with personnel costs, as you well know, every single individual has 10 or so variables to look at, for each person. So we were able to come up with that, that answer by looking at the, deep into the weeds. So it's basically just the increased cost of our benefits packages that translates to a couple thousand dollar increase, all, all told. That's all. Not a very interesting answer.
I, I have a question regarding sales from the Ironman. I had touched base with you, Emily, when we were there. I was like, hey, the sales, do we, do we get to make any sort of tax? Do we get to anything from those sales? Because I know that was really expensive stuff in the tent.
Another boring and disappointing answer. I don't have that answer yet.
Okay, that's okay. I know you're busy.
It's top of the list.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, I asked Michael Wamboldt that, and he said that we do get sales. No?
Sorry. I did verify this answer with tourism because I was very excited if we were getting, indeed getting the sales tax. And he clarified that he, he doesn't know. It's something we need to research.
We'll add that to the list.
Yes, I will bring that answer back to you.
Of course.
Thank you.
So while I have the floor, may I, may I get back to some of the questions that earlier was directed at me?
Please.
Thank you. So I thought about a couple of things. Thank you, Harbor Director Shifong. And the Yardi is one of the things, and one of the software that we use that could help with efficiency. And we also wanted to point, I also want to point out, we utilize grants. Fire department is very, very good at, all the departments, but fire department, fire chief, he is really skilled at the grants and, and looking for them and then apply for them and have a success record of gaining grants. And also, we have, in, in terms of fire department, they also have the strike team program that they send out. We send out folks to do that. And then it's a training, it's a training opportunity for our, for our employees. And, but also, the, the cost has been, been reimbursed by the state. And as a result, we, we put up, we, we sometime, it's not earning money, just reimbursement, but we have, we can accumulate fund for the vehicles, the fire vehicles. You all know this is very costly. So that's one of the example. I don't know if fire chief, you wanna to add something to that?
Sure. Thank you for bringing that up. So as you spoke about the mutual aid, that is one way that we're able to maximize training opportunities. We get people out and they get some real-world experience in different scenarios outside of our county. We do get reimbursed for their time and for the equipment usage. And then we can utilize that as part of our replacement schedule for some of the vehicles applying those funds towards that. It also helps with replacing some of the equipment that's used on that because we get reimbursed for the wear and tear on that equipment. We're also, you know, utilizing seasonal firefighters instead of the reserve program to help improve our staffing during the summer. So just looking for ways to maximize efficiency like that. And like most agencies, transitioning digital formats for things, patient care reports, data collection, instead of doing it by hand, we have digital software that does it much more accurately, and it auto reports to the proper authorities and things like that.
So I, if I, you now, you make me start, so I can't stop now. I'm gonna go on. And some other things I wanted to, to say that, that police department also is very hands-on. Chief Watkins, she pretty much, she, she does everything. If she can, she, she'll, she'll do it. She will get it done. And by that, we really saved money on, on other things. For example, she brought up on the vehicle maintenance, our officers make sure, I think she probably have her schedule one before the shift start or something. Everybody will check the vehicles and make sure it's all there. So these, these little things adds up your due diligence. So you don't have to, you run out, you, you know, you're on a, on a patrol, and then your vehicle broke, then you have to call, tell anyone, I mean, anything. It just adds to, added, added to the costs because the vehicle is a big, really very big cost, right? I don't know if you wanna add anything?
Thank you. I think with the, the police department, just like all other departments, that fiscal responsibility is number, number one on our goal. And so it is weekly that we go over the budget and make sure that our training and our personnel is where it needs to be. Certainly, we've gone to some software that has helped us with vehicle maintenance, preventative maintenance, to eliminate those larger cost items. Certainly acquiring vehicles in a timely manner as emergency response requires, that we have those vehicles that are operational at all times. And then the other large thing that we've talked about, certainly we've talked about in council goals, and it really goes to any department, is the recruitment, hiring, and retention of staffing. When I bring an officer on, in the first year, they will go through a large amount of professional development that is required and mandated per the state. And so keeping officers, keeping firefighters, keeping your personnel, your staff for five, you know, 10 years is also important for the bottom line because that does cost a lot of money to recruit, to train. And then if you lose them, that also adds to, to that fiscal, you know, burning that money. So, and then with the police department, like anything else, crime reduction is a big part of, of overall budget as well because you look at, you know, those costs are gonna be turned to our community members. So making sure that our community is safe and our police department is being responsive to the needs of our community, certainly to theft, traffic collisions, traffic enforcement. Those are all things that can affect the bottom line for the community, and therefore us.
If I may also add a couple items from Public Works. So in, in Public Works, we try to utilize our, our staff with staff's interest and skills. And in many cases, we have very skilled people on our operations teams. One that comes to mind is in, in maintenance. Mr. Carlos Mendoza has moved towards trimming some of our street trees with our own crews. And that has involved renting some simple equipment. And we now have an experienced tree trimmer on staff. And we've been able to, rather than spend thousands of dollars to trim trees through a contractor, we just do it ourselves at minimal cost. And some of the equipment that we've been purchasing is to help us support doing that in the long term, which will save us money over the years. And then in utilities, we have a very skilled staff member who sort of, I've always think of him as a computer whiz, Grant Chase. He's not here today, but he has created the backbone of our SCADA system. And that is a system in utilities where we can control the sewer plant and other facilities, water pumps remotely. And he writes the code for that, the, the computer code. Many neighboring agencies are jealous of our ability to do this. They, they hire this work out to consultants. He's easily saved us over $100,000. And he's just a wonderful member of the team. So we, we have many examples of that throughout the department, and I'm sure just throughout the city as, as well. Just want to call them out.
Wow. That was a great response to me trying to kill time. I really appreciate it. And I, I just, you know, most of those things, I, well, actually, I would say, some of those things I already knew. I did not know the full scope of, of what our departments are doing to, to save us money on top of the things you were already doing. This is exciting to hear, and I appreciate all the work that each department is doing to have that fiscal responsibility at, at, you know, but also making sure that we're able to fulfill the, the needs of our community and, and to keep our city running. So thank you for that.
So, well, thank you. Yeah, I, I, I kind of, I'm disappointed. I have to stop because I just come up with all these other stories.
Put it in your newsletter, city manager. Put it in your newsletter.
Any other questions, Councilmember Landrum? Thank you. And thank you, I think that helps council as well as the general public and our citizens understand that there's always ongoing efficiencies within each of the departments. And the city as a team, working, your executive team, working collaboratively to find those grants, to find those opportunities for efficiencies and to tap into those wonderful resources that we have in our staff. We are very fortunate, and that helps a lot. Having zero-based budgets, you know, when you talk about doing the budget each year, you know, you do have to justify what your expenses are. So it helps. It all circles in and keeps us aware of where we need to be fiscally and, and be good stewards. Any other questions? Yes?
I forgot to ask this one of Director Shifong. Hi. I am wondering about the, the forecast and if that, does that, is that including? Because we've had a new business go online now with the Harbor Walk. And does that including, like, estimating for that? And, and then the, the projections in the, like, next year go down for the harbor leases? And I'm wondering, it might have already been explained, but I'm wondering why that is.
Councilmember Landrum, thank you. I can give you a two-part answer to the question. First, you know, on the expense side, it's very easy to estimate for the harbor. We know it 2023 ended. We know every month as it comes in, and we can look at, look at those numbers. Estimating revenue for the harbor is much more difficult because we have 2023, but for 2024, 25% of our revenue doesn't come in until July this summer. So we estimate on the conservative side, but we are looking at the fact that we do have some additional revenue coming in, and we hope that's going to produce. But we also don't know how the businesses have done over this entire year. We, we get fixed rent. We don't get percentage rent until July. So we're, we're always gonna estimate on the conservative side.
That makes sense. Thank you. And then, Mr. Qualick, I, I, you know, as I, I drive through town and see the, and I think your savings, like the tree trimming and all of that, that's such a great idea. Yay, Carlos. I am wondering, like, I see the, the beautiful flowers and landscaping that Morro Bay and Bloom has put in and maintains. And I know that we give them, you know, a little bit of money, and I think other organizations give them money as well. But I'm wondering, like, what that savings to this, like, how that manifests as, like, where are we putting that extra time that we're not having to spend time and money into, into that expense?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Landrum. And staff fully agrees that we, we're very lucky to have Morro Bay and Bloom in town doing that work. I, I would call that an enhancement. I, if they weren't there doing that work, we, we would not be doing gardening in those planters. And so I, I think that the, that the city gets a big win from that work. I wouldn't be able to calculate, you know, what we save from that because I'm, I'm not sure that we save anything. We just have a better-looking city as a result.
Thank you. It, it's just a good example of what volunteers can do and, and how they can also offset our costs.
Mr. Cauldron, I wanted to ask you a question since other people were highlighting things going on in their departments. Oh, do you have to share the, sorry? I was intrigued looking at the, the list of all the things that, that go on in community development, and it's, it's quite a list. And I just was wondering about, are there, are there other things that we don't see? Because I hadn't, I hadn't seen this complete list before, and it's, it's an amazing amount of things that get done over the course of a year. And I was just wondering if you had some things to throw out there also about things that are going on in, in community development?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Barton and Mayor and Council. I think it's a pretty comprehensive list, and I don't think that I have a bunch of other things that are going on outside that list. I would say, however, that maybe what people don't realize is that it feels like 90% of our day is spent just with the bread and butter of our work, which are like minor permits for home remodels, for minor permits for tenant improvements when new businesses are, are moving into a space. And that, in that environment, we have a, a small staff, I would say, for all of that regular work that we have. We're also accomplishing a lot of big things for the city in terms of the recent adoption unanimous by the Coastal Commission of the city's local coastal plan, the general plan, and the corresponding zoning regulations and implementation plan. That's a huge milestone and progress that our department was able to accomplish. And the consultants are long gone, and so it's been the, the staff that have been tracking this and having the communications with, with the Coastal Commission. We deal a lot with the Coastal Commission, and, and that's kind of like having another city council to deal with. We do all of our use permits and other, you know, design review. But typically, on top of all those, there's also a coastal development permit and analysis that goes into compliance with the LCP and the IP that go to Coastal Commission for decisions. And so, you know, with the zoning regulations update, I know that more items were able to be done administratively by staff. And that's something where we look forward to providing an increased service to the community by providing administrative approvals of permits instead of having them go for that extra oftentimes year-long process of going in front of the Coastal.
That should be very helpful, I would think.
I, I think so. And then the other thing that I'm looking forward to that we'll be able to share with the city council soon is the scope of work for the waterfront master plan update. And so we submitted a grant application for $500,000 and very quickly heard back from the Coastal Commission that they'd like to increase that amount and have us evaluate other items in that scope of work, including parking, which I know is a big one for the city council and the community as it relates to the Embarcadero. So we're working with the Coastal Commission to expand that scope. Unfortunately, right now, due to state budget constraints, they're not awarding new funds currently. But we're taking the time to work with our Coastal Commission staff to dial in that scope of work. So when those funds get freed up, we're able to update that application, get the funding, and move forward with that project.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cauldron. Any other questions right now for staff? Finance Director Conrad, any way you want us to start down this list of things to start addressing? I don't think we're gonna get through it today as we're coming up to 5:00. 5 o'clock already. But is there somewhere you'd like us to start or you want us, as far as CFAC recommendations first or reserves first or, do you have some layout of how you, or do you want me to just wing it?
We can start at the top. How about direction on the CFAC recommendations for this budget?
Perfect. So CFAC had, can we pull that slide back up by any chance? Thank you.
Absolutely, just one moment, please. We're going to start at the beginning and go through every slide again. Just kidding.
What?
Just a little joke.
Watched it twice already.
So, you see before you the recommendations from our CFAC, reducing the reserve, the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program for a total cost of $77,000. And a reduction or actually a swapping of expenditures rather than funding two programs, they would like to instead fund the pavement management program.
I'm going to ask for council input.
I have a question regarding the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program. Can, can you weigh in on how you feel about that just before we move forward with?
Thank you, councilmembers. So, right now, based on staffing, the Harbor Reserve Program is the only way we can staff during times of vacations, illnesses, injuries, training. So, the Harbor Reserve Program basically fills in because we have just enough staff to meet our requirements if none of that happens. So, if, if that were to go away, you know, we would either have to find a way to fund it in our existing budget, which I'm not necessarily confident we can do, or we would need to reduce services.
Okay, thank you for answering that.
Anything you can weigh in on that, Ms. Conrad, as far as if we were to accept CFAC's recommendation on removing that, where would you look to the funding for?
We would need to look to the Harbor Fund for that $77,000 a year, increasing year over year.
I guess I would, I go back to the old school of understanding too, as we're looking at Measure E, that it's actually Q and E. When they were sold us two separate projects, one at a half cent and one at a whole cent and it did include Harbor in that. So, you know, trying to have some leeway. I, I heard the comments from CFAC as I attended the meeting as well as Councilmember Edwards and their concern was that it was outside of what they felt was staffing beyond police and fire and things, but I question that because of that Measure Q component that really does allow, allow that. So, I'm interested in hearing from the others of you.
Yeah, out of the three here, that this, the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program is, is the most concerning to me. I hear what you're saying, Mayor, and, and I know that it was advertised as that. And so, I have a hard time getting behind the Harbor Patrol Reserve Program being reallocated to the Harbor Fund. As far as the reduced project funding, Director Qualick, I mean, it seems to make sense in the explanation. Is there anything else you want to add to that? As far as the LRSP, is there anything else you'd like for us to know?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Ford. I think the recommendation is reasonable from CFAC on this. We do have some carryover money from LRSP and from the sidewalk and street tree replacements project from this year. And so, some of that money might be used to leverage for, for other grants, but given that Measure E wasn't really going to contribute anything to paving for this coming year's project, you know, this is, this is one way to get that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards?
Well, I do know there was some conversation during the CFAC meeting with regard to the lifeguard program and I know that we did decide to keep that and I think that was kind of, the thought behind that was safety, safety of the harbor. But I can see, I can see the argument for the reserve program as well because if, obviously we're, we don't have the staff to fill in, that's, that's an issue. Yeah. I mean, we do get ourselves somewhat into this conversation, I've noticed in the past couple of budgets, when it comes to Measure E and Q and that kind of subjective understanding, right, of, of how we look at it, even though we know it was written a certain way. So.
I'm not sure if you were done.
Wait, I just, can I, I just was, I didn't really understand what you were saying about the lifeguards. So, there was just discussion, sorry, I was just trying to take a look at the harbor and the aspects of safety because it was included as the mayor referenced to in Measure Q. And of course, there is that aspect of just looking at the safety, the water safety, obviously, of the harbor. So, they decided to keep the funding of the lifeguard program within the parameters of Measure E, but this was one that they.
Okay.
I think one, what I understood them to say, they separated out the reserves, they were saying they were paying for staffing where, for the harbor versus the lifeguards that were on the beaches for tourism and safety. So, they saw them as two separate issues. Still staffing, staffing is staffing, so. But that was their rationale to it, to CFAC's rationale. Councilmember Barton?
This is, this is hard to pick because each of these has strengths and things that you might want to include and, or continue to include. So, I'm just sitting here thinking, well, what to do?
Councilmember Landrum?
I, I totally agree with the reduced project funding for the LRSP. And I guess I am leaning towards Director Chifon's recommendation on the Harbor Reserve Program.
Yeah, I think that's my feelings is that I appreciate CFAC's work and certainly heard their concerns and I think it's something that we need to address moving forward in how we're utilizing funds. I would not want to put that financial hardship on the Harbor Fund right now, not knowing what we would have to reduce in lieu of, and again, circling back to Measure Q, understanding that it was part of it. And I totally support the reduction, recommendation of reduction to the LRSP and transferring it to the paving and I'm actually going to, as we get into the rest of the funds with reserves and things, ask for more for paving for next year. I, I don't feel comfortable not allocating money to our paving fund. But as far as those three recommendations, that would be where I, I stand as far as those, so.
I stand in the same position, Mayor.
So, I think, does that give you direction on that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And with that action, the funding for pavement management will rise to $619,000.
Thank you. That was including that SB 1 money?
Mm-hmm, precisely.
Okay. But is that specific for, wasn't that specific allocated that SB 1 for, that's not just regular paving, is it? Funds?
Every year, it's transferred from, it's funded to the pavement management program.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. The next is the question on the positions, as far as direction on the change in positions, the two for the Recreation Department, converting to half-time positions to two full-time positions. I did have an opportunity to ask for some clarification from the Finance Department about those, if they were going to take on the task they already have plus more and maybe, did you respond to all of us or was it just me? So, perhaps you could just share that.
Just to you, Mayor.
Thank you.
The, these conversions of the two part-time positions, one is the aquatics coordinator currently and the other is called kids camp director. And converting these two positions will reduce part-time because currently there are, there's a part-time position in office, if I understand correctly, that does some of the clerical work. So, these converted part-time to full-time positions will continue their current duties and take on office administrative, administrative duties as well.
And that would eliminate some of the other need for the part-time for the administrative.
Correct.
So, the full-time equivalence is the same, isn't it? Or almost the same, is it a half of a?
I think it's pretty close to the same.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So, questions, I'm sorry, and then the third position is the one for the admin, for Assistant City Manager slash Economic Person slash Community slash, slash.
Slash, slash, slash.
Yet to be determined position, yeah. And City Manager Kimball, you are working with HR on that with developing a?
Yes, this has been in consideration for, for a little while. I just want to clarify, this is just, we call, we just put it, a placeholder called Assistant to City Manager. Like, Mayor, you stated, we, we're not quite sure what the final title may be, but the focus, all these things that, that, the focus will be on public relations and communication and, and then inter, interdepartmental communication and then the projects that, just that none of us can get to, things like that. And then, if there are, if there are, there is room in, if there's more time the position has, that the position can also handle some economic development and related core, those, those kind of duties such as meeting with businesses and help, the business relationship coupled with projects and things like that. So, it is rather fluid, but we, we look at a budget, how can we afford that is to, to use some of the economic development fund and the general fund together because, again, as you all know, general, general fund is the fund that really needs, needs a lot of attention, doesn't, everything comes to general fund, but economic, we have all these other non-major funds, some of them have very large balance, but we couldn't even utilize them as much as we want to.
Thank you. And I would circle back that part of that was council goals for the communication and economic development and part of that was council direction that we had asked the city manager to look at a support person because the, the tasks with so many items on our plate right now are huge. So, thank you for addressing that. So, questions and comments on the three positions?
My comment is that I'm excited to see these three positions move forward and I'd love to get the final description eventually on that position, but understand that we need to budget for it at this point in time. So, I'm ready to move forward with these, with the, with this item.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, in terms of whatever we call this position, I do think that it is critical that we get someone into that and that we really determine and flush out and define what this person's role is and personally, not only through our goal setting, but just recently looking at the economic development contract and the emphasis that we've been putting on community engagement. I mean, that's going to be a really helpful, very, very helpful staff position to fill. So, that's my two cents.
Councilmember Burton?
I'm in favor of all three of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Landrum?
I, I'm for sure in favor of the community, the Assistant City Manager. And I'm not 100% clear on the, on the other two. I just don't really, I think I just don't really understand yet, like, what the fiscal, you know, is that saving money ultimately? It sounds like that's what you're saying.
No.
No.
It doesn't ultimately save money, it ultimately does cost money.
More money?
Yes, because of the benefits packages that are involved. But human resources and finance are in favor of this conversion. These have been two long-term part-time positions. Part-time is supposed to be part-time temporary in this capacity and after this amount of time, it's not temporary. So, something needs to be adjusted here.
Mr. Carmichael, any comments?
Happy to answer any questions if I can help.
Well, what timeframe are we talking about? How long have they been temporary? And is, I didn't realize that it's, it's a thing that you can't have people be temporary for a certain amount of time?
Yeah, so our aquatics coordinator has been a part-time person since the pool opened about seven years ago, working 30-plus hours a week and then on call on Sundays. Another individual in my office, Angelica Galardo, she's our Recreation Supervisor, she worked for the city for 12 years doing 40 hours a week. So, what we're trying to do is be fair to these people and not treat them so poorly.
Oh, wow, I didn't realize Angelica wasn't full-time.
She is now, she has been for, for eight-plus years now, but.
Oh.
Obviously, for 12 years she was.
Right, but these two new jobs are, are, how long have they been with the city?
Yeah, so the aquatics coordinator's been here for seven, a little over seven years and our, the other position, Christina, she's been with us about the same, about seven years.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
And I wanted to mention.
And their tasks, they'll take on other duties that will complete the 40-hour work week.
Yeah, what they'll do is move a few hours into the office to do planning and organization for their programs that they offer. Katie, our aquatics coordinator instructs Harbor Department full-time staff in first aid and life-saving, so it's a, it's kind of an upside-down model. It's not fair to her, so we're trying to crack that.
Thank you. So, are you good?
Uh-huh.
Thank you. So, there's council support for that? Were there any others in there that, I think it was just some switching around on some part-time, full-time equivalents, wasn't it? With the fire hydrant person and those were just open positions that we're filling back in?
There is a new request in the Utilities Division so that, the Utilities Intern is a new request and then I don't know if they just changed the name of the hydrant maintenance workers, but I believe that there was an overall increase. It's minor in the scope of those funds' operating budgets, so.
But the Utilities would, would not be as that full, a full-time position or part-time position?
It's proposed to be a part-time position and it would be split between water and sewer.
Mr. Qualick?
Yeah, I could give some high-level detail on that. The assistants with the meter reading from the Fire Department, those would be part-time positions, but only for one month. Do I have that right, Damaris? And Damaris, if you want to speak to that, you can come up.
I can speak on that a little bit too, Greg. So, it's our seasonal firefighters for the first month of the season are doing fire hydrant maintenance under the Water Department assisting with that. And the Water Department's funding their positions for that first month while they're doing the.
Thank you for that clarification.
I think they work for us for like three weeks, it ends up being, yeah.
Can't hear you.
They're, they're, they're working with the Water Department for about three weeks, so it's, yeah.
And the Utilities?
And the Utilities internship is to help in various areas. So, one of them is to help with grant that Greg was talking about earlier. He does a lot of work that he needs just an assistant on and so we could have someone help him do some of his work there. He's actually going to be leaving on paternity leave pretty soon, so it'd be good to have someone else there to help him out.
And that's a half-time position?
It is.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that. Any other questions?
Is that position temporary?
Yes? Oh, okay. So just while he's on paternity leave?
It's, it's for the year, but it's a part-time position for the year.
Just for one year?
Just for the one.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. So are you, are you good with that, Ms. Conrad?
So we have council support for the three?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We need some time to reset for our council meeting, and it's 5:15. We can attempt to circle back and finish if we get done early enough tonight, or we will need to continue tomorrow. It depends what time we get through the agenda, otherwise we'll need to continue tomorrow. Thank you.
Mayor, so, sounds like we're officially going to continue to, we're going to take a break and continue this item to after the regular meeting. But if we've run too late, then after the regular meeting, we'll continue it to tomorrow?
Thank you for that.
Okay.
New Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Perfect. Just like he said. So we're not closing the meeting?
We are not closing the meeting. We're taking.
We are temporarily adjourned.
Yes, temporarily adjourned.